Good evening, everyone. Today is May the 21st, 2019 at 6:30 PM. And we'd like to begin as we do all of our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask your city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have the Vice Mayor to consider any changes or setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set and submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and second to set the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the agenda's been set. Now, we have a couple of proclamations that we would like to read at this time. I will start with one, and then after I've finished this proclamation, I'll have Vice Mayor Gabriel to read his proclamation. This one, the first proclamation we're gonna have today is the proclamation on National Public Works Week, which is May 19th through the 25th of 2019, which it's entitled, it starts here. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Laramie. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public's, it is in the public's interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Laramie to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association/Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Joe Shumway, mayor, by the authority vested in me, do hereby designate the week of May 19th to May 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and have cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Laramie to this 21st day of May, 2019, and it's signed by me. I'd like to have Brooks Webb and Eric Japp to come forward, and one of you, if you want to, or both of you, make comments. First of all, what's said in here is exactly the way we feel. We have professionals that work hard and provide a wonderful service to our community, and we appreciate everything you do, and that's in recognition and to name this week. So, Brooks, would you like to make comments? And then Eric, if you'd like to follow up, that'd be great, too.
Mayor, Council, the City of Laramie Department of Public Works has approximately 75 men and women that work very hard every day. They're the folks that make your water run, your toilets flush, your trash disappear, and give you streets to drive on. They, we take a lot of that for granted in our daily lives, and they quite often go unnoticed, which is how we like it. That means things are going well. And, but anyway, we wanted to recognize them publicly tonight.
Thank you. City Engineer, Japp.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all you did. If one of you had come up and received this, or both of you, then you can. And thanks again for all you did.
Thank you.
Young some heroes.
All right. So, at this time, I'd like the Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, to read this next proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the City of Laramie Arbor Day celebrations. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside. The planting of trees in this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the planting of trees is a vital step in developing civic pride and a sense of community by providing an abundance of environmental and aesthetic advantages to citizens and wildlife and wherever they are found. Whereas the state of Wyoming has designated the last Monday in April as State Arbor Day and allows communities in Wyoming to designate their own Arbor Day based upon the climatic conditions of the community. Whereas the City of Laramie has celebrated Arbor Day in the annual community tree sale since 1984. And whereas the governing body of the City of Laramie desires to participate in the annual celebration of Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day will be celebrated two days in Laramie with the Arbor Day Tree Planting at Harbin Park, May 23rd of this year, 1:30, in conjunction with the University of Wyoming Lab School eighth-grade science class, and on June 8th of this year with the annual Arbor Day Tree Sale at the ICE and Event Center beginning at 7:00 AM in conjunction with Rooted in Laramie. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, the Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, acting on behalf of the Mayor, Joe Shumway, do hereby proclaim, May 23rd, 2019, is Laramie Arbor Day Tree Planting; June 8th, 2019, is Arbor Day Tree Sale. We urge residents of Laramie to plant trees and to support our city's community forestry program. In witness thereof, I have, along with the Mayor, actually, he has set his hand and caused the official seal of the city to be affixed this 21st day of May, 2019. We have two people in the audience, City Arborist Randy Overstreet, along with Tyler, would like to say a few words.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this year, the Rooted in Laramie, which is a brand-new nonprofit group in Laramie, they, their goal is to plant as many trees in the right place, get the right tree in the right place as possible, and provide trees at low cost for all citizens of Laramie. And this year, they're gonna be selling trees at the tree sale for $50 each. These are nice-sized trees. The $50 also gets the tree planted by Rooted in Laramie volunteers. So, it's quite a deal. So, if you have residential property in Laramie, please come down and get a tree.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Randy. Okay?
You did a great job.
And if you're getting trees, Brian will tell ya, get there early, or you won't get one.
That's right.
Would you like to come forward?
We got a picture.
Let me get a picture with you and Council.
We have a tree we can come down and... Props.
Awesome.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we should let Jane, Jane...
Jane, Jane.
Gotcha. Oh, hold on a second, Jane was moving. She's still moving.
She's laughing, stop.
Gotcha.
If I could have you stay together for one second for one picture, which is the Council, Nancy would like it for the newsletter.
Okay.
We're missing Charles.
Oh, that's right, we'll do it later then.
He told us he'd be here late.
All right.
Yeah, he's working, yeah.
Next item we have on our agenda is the public hearing. I'd like to ask the city clerk to give, read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on May 21st, 2019, in city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following. Original ordinance number 1998, amending LMC 5.09, alcoholic beverages to align municipal code with state statute, make clarifications, and clean up code. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the City of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding this item, if you please come forward either for or against. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Now, there are announcements.
Mayor, we have two announcements from the Assistant City Manager's office.
Honorable Mayor, with Memorial Day coming up, it's important for us to make a couple of these announcements. First off, VFW Post 2221 will begin placing flags at the Green Hill Cemetery on military graves at 8:00 AM on Saturday morning. Lunch will be provided those who help, and it's a big thank you, so we'd like to extend a big thank you to VFW Post 2221. Also, the Avenue of Flags will be placed in the cemetery between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM Saturday, Sunday, and Monday at the Green Hill Cemetery and observance of Memorial Day. So, be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
We've ordered good weather for those. All right, are there a budget? Are there any disclosures by anyone in the city council, or any of the items we have on the agenda? Okay, so turn the time back to our Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. That completes all the items on the consent agenda. We wanna thank those that were here for those items, and all those have passed. So, we'll now move on to our regular agenda. Our first item on the regular agenda is item number 10. Counselor O'Doherty.
Okay, so I move to award the bid for the Laramie landfill stage-two expansion project to Weeden Construction LLC in the amount of $3,906,483, along with contingency of $585,972, for a total amount of $4,492,455, to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Mr. Webb, we're spending lots of money.
I am, yeah. We are. Honorable Mayor, City Council, kinda wanted to lay out, give you some background on the first four items on your agenda tonight. Back in July, we went out for an RFQ to do the design of the Laramie landfill project and the paving project. At that time, we decided it was advantageous to do those, the design, and our original intent was to do the project all as one. In August, we awarded that RFQ, you awarded that RFQ, to Trihydro Corporation. In October, we applied for the SRF loan for the landfill expansion project, and at that time, we realized it wasn't appropriate to have the Baylor paving project in with that project. So, we directed Trihydro at that time to give us two plan sets and two packages to bid as two separate projects. So, what originally would have been one project and one professional service agreement is now two projects and two professional service agreements, which you'll see as we go through here. For the item that the motion is for right now is the Laramie landfill expansion project. This is a project we've been talking about for a long time. We actually had a work session like two years ago to go over this project and talk about it. Paid for with the SRF loan that was approved a couple weeks ago. We had three bidders come in. The low bidder was Weeden Construction. City staff, Trihydro staff, and Wyoming DEQ staff all reviewed the bid packages and agreed that Weeden was the lowest qualified bidder on the project. Any questions?
Any questions from Council? Okay, and this is on the item number 10. Any comments from the audience regarding item number 10? Get back to Council. Any comments from the Council? Counselor Weaver.
Just one, Mr. Mayor, and I think we could apply it to any of those four items, so I'll only say it once. It's good that we're having this at the top of our agenda after our proclamation about public works, because as Mr. Webb talked about, sometimes it goes unnoticed. You know, you take your garbage out to the garbage can, the city comes and picks it up, and you're recycling, and that's kind of it for you. But it is really involved, and it hasn't been all that long ago that some of the regulations and mandates around solid waste management and how cities and towns are tasked with doing that has changed. It's been significantly upgraded, and the technology, even though we don't always associate that with taking things out to the dump, as we call it, is different now. The city was tasked with building aligned landfill, and that has some special protections for groundwater and ground contamination, and it's a big enterprise, and it's a costly enterprise. So, the city, at the same time, decided to invest also into a Baylor system for baling technology to try to compact that garbage and get the most use out of those new costly landfill pits that we were gonna put out there. And I asked Mr. Webb about this several months ago. It surprises me, but I guess this is the pace, that the first cell, as they call them, is almost already full, and of course, we need to start planning and building these next couple of cells, so here we are. But it is, it is a system that we try to get the maximum amount of use on as we fill these new areas up, so that we can keep that efficient service, so that we're not worried about what we're doing with our solid waste. We know where it's going, and we're planning as we go how we're gonna pay for it and how we're gonna manage that. And, yeah, like I said, I think you can apply that to any of these, but it is involved, and there's a lot that goes into it. And if the city does it right, and our employees do it right, and we plan it right, then we don't have to notice it, because we're taking care of it the way we need to, and it looks like we're sticking with that plan. It's just surprising how quick those new, those new cells are filling, but I know we've planned ahead of time, and this is part of that process. So, I just think always a little history, Mr. Mayor. You know, as much as I like to hear my own voice, I also think it's good for the public to kinda get the background on those things, 'cause it gives a little context. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Council? All right, you covered it all for us. Roll call.
Just the one time.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, item number 10 passes. Item number 11, Counselor O'Doherty.
I move to approve Amendment 1 of the Laramie landfill expansion project professional services agreement with Trihydro Corporation to conduct construction services for the total amendment amount of $253,506.0, with a $38,026 contingency for the total contract amount not to exceed $369,448.30, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Mr. Webb.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so this is for the construction services during the project that was just approved. Construction management, construction quality assurance for Trihydro. Part of the contract is that they perform program compliance for the SRF, construction observation, material testing. With this type of project, with the liner material going in, it gets really technical. There's a lot of testing that goes on to ensure that the liner is properly welded together and sealed, and everything's in the way it's supposed to be, and then there's some certifications that have to come from that, from Trihydro, the engineering group, to the state. And so, that's what this is for, the professional services, to make sure it's all done right. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Webb? Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, all of these, as everybody knows, have contingencies in the contract. How many times have you, in your experience, seen the contingency not used, or not very much of it used? Just curious on that.
Mayor, City Council, I think it just varies on every project. It really does. And in some projects, we're comfortable with the 10% contingency. On this project, we're doing 15% because of, because of the technical aspect of the liner, and you can always run into issues there that bump that up a little bit. We always hope we don't have to even touch the contingency, but we have that in there for contingency, yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Webb? All right, anyone in the audience that have any comments they'd like to make regarding this item? Any comments from the Council on item number 11? All right, roll call.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes. Was it on the landfill?
Yes.
Yeah. Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
All right, did we?
Yeah, I called him out of order, so...
I was ready, though.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so that, item number 11, then, has passed unanimously. Item number 12, Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to award the bid for the Laramie landfill Baylor Building paving project to hammocker excavation in the amount of $316,083.65, along with a contingency of $47,412.55, for a total amount of $363,496.20, and to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Mr. Webb.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so if you've been out to the landfill in front of the Baylor Building, there's a huge area that's all dirt, and when the weather's like this, it turns to mud and muck, and it gets really bad. When we built the facility back in 2012 through 2014, we recognized that problem, and we wanted to pave then. We simply didn't have the funds, so we recognized it. We put in our capital plan, and we've now reached the point that we wanna do the project. So, we went out to bid on the project. We had four bidders come in. Hammocker excavation was the lowest responsive bidder. Questions?
Any questions from Council? Any questions from the audience? Council, any comments? Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
And that item passes. Item number 14, Counselor Sch...
Number 13.
Number 13, Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve, sorry, I move to approve Amendment 2 of the Laramie landfill expansion professional services agreement with Trihydro Corporation to conduct construction services on the Baylor Building paving project for a total amendment amount of $32,580, with a $3,258 contingency, for a total contract amount not to exceed $405,286.30, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schuster. Mr. Webb.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so this is the professional service agreement for construction services, construction management, construction quality assurances for the paving portion of the project for the Baylor paving. Same thing, they're basically the day-to-day oversight on the project, doing some testing. This contract is much less, because we're not getting, it's not as big a project, and we're not getting into that conformance testing with the liner materials and things like that. So, much smaller, much smaller project on that scale. What, that'll take questions, if you have them?
Any questions from Council? Webb, any questions or comments from the audience, from the public? Council, any comments? Roll call.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That item also passes. Item number 14, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title is, "Approve Change Order Number Two to the Mitchell Street Waterline Replacement Project." I move to approve Change Order Number Two for the Mitchell Street Waterline Replacement Project in the amount of $377,466.20, and amend the fiscal year 2018/2019 general fund budget for $377,467, no cents, funded by the 2002 Special Purpose Tax Funds of $280,339, and cash reserves of $97,128.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor O'Doherty. City Engineer Japp.
Honorable Mayor, members of Council, last year, we replaced the failing water line in Mitchell Street from 15th to 18th. At the same time, we installed a slotted underdrain pipe down Mitchell Street and storm sewer down 15th to help address the high groundwater and drainage in the area. This change order will help resolve the poor roadway and drainage conditions for this area. The PCI on Mitchell Street between 15th and 18th Street is 39, and the curb and gutter has also failed in many of the locations along the street because of the high groundwater. Repairs for this will be to repair, do some spot repair on the curb and gutter, about 875 feet. In addition, we will mill out the entire roadway and replace the asphalt, and also place a chip seal. I do wanna note to you that the patching that did occur last year had an issue that occurred with the asphalt, so we won't be redoing any of the asphalt work that we played to, did last year. The contractor's actually responsible for that because of that issue, so it's actually a good time to get in there and do some of that roadway work. So, we're not really out of a loss, and we're not duplicating any work with that. So, with that, I can answer any questions you have on this project.
Counselor Schuster.
I think I need to fix this, 'cause one of it said funded by the 2002 Special Purpose Tax Funds. That should be 2020 or 2002?
It's correct. It's diffusing from the 2001/2 SPT.
Okay.
Was that read in the introduction?
Yeah. Yeah, I read it the way it was stated on there. I thought, okay. Stumbled, but I looked at it.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Japp? Counselor Weaver.
I have one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PCI pavement condition indexing score that we get, I'm curious, do we have a lot of poor PCI ratings in that particular section of town? I mean, you know, you gave us that one. Are there several others in that area that are also on that lower end of the scale? I know they're distributed in different places across the city, but it seems, memory seems to serve that that is an area where we've got some concentrations of poor pavement condition index.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Weaver, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to kinda pull up some of our mapping and everything else to be able to fully answer that. I can get that to you if you'd like, though.
Yeah, it would, Mr. Mayor, it'd be interesting to get that, because I know that we have some drainage issues, you know, concentrated in some of the northern sections of the city, and I'm just curious if those kind of go right along with some of our poorer PCI scores. And it would be, you know, that's bad, but in some ways, it would be good, because when we do one project, we can take a look at trying to improve the, you know, the pavement conditions as we go along, hopefully look at some savings. But I understand there's no way to give me that right now, but I'd be interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, looking at that 2002 date, SPT, is there any... any special explanation why that money had not been used previously?
Mayor and Council, the city didn't author the bonds. They were authored at the county level, and they allowed for over-collection. And so the over-collected funds have to be dispersed and used in accordance with the ballot language from the 2001 election. The language in this case was for street repairs, and so the defeesance funds, as we call them, what was over-collected, can be put toward future and other street projects. As a matter of correction, when we bonded in 2010 for the SPT then, and in the most recent SPT, Malia structured the bond such that there is no over-collection allowed. So that should, this is sort of an artifact of history, and it won't be repeated so long as the city is the author of the bonds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Counsel, any comments on this before we vote? City Clerk, would you do roll call?
Weaver.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
All right, that item passes. Item number 15, Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, move to approve City Council Resolution 2019-44, stating the city's intent to submit final design drawings of Third Street median enhancements to YDOT, in which such enhancements are noted in the 321 Third Street adopted plan, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Chief Operating Officer Brown.
Yes, Counsel. We had a work session on parking and medians, and this is just a follow-up to submit the final design changes for the plan. This came about back in '15, where YDOT announced that they were going to do street changes on Third Street. And with that, in '16, Main Street partnered with YDOT, City, and the university and got a grant. And with that, they did a lot of design changes, including the medians. In the past, the council has adopted resolutions saying they would go with 321 plan enhancements, and agreed to the median design, and it also went through Planning Commission. So we're just here today, probably around five months ago, there were some citizens who were really concerned, especially with the median down north, in that it really affected some businesses, and they were concerned with parking spaces. So we went and did some changes in our design. I think we've accommodated, took away fewer park, as much, didn't really affect the parking on the north side, so we want to submit that design that we came to council during our work session, and submit that new design to YDOT, so it gets into their design plan. Other than that, we're proposing still not to change the design on the south end. We did look if we could shorten up that one to help the business, businesses there, but it actually takes away 31 spots versus 17. And the difference between the two areas is that the north only has a four lane, and this, I mean, sorry, the north has a five lane, and the south only has a four lane, which makes the site distances having to take more parking away. So we're just recommending for the north end, which we presented at council, so we're just asking for what we presented at council to be adopted and get it into the, because we have to go change the design, because what's, YDOT already has adopted the plan for medians, and all we're doing is trying to go ahead and ask them to change the design for the north side, to not have it in the middle of the intersection, so that that business can have flow that they asked for.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Brown? Okay. Counselor Weaver?
Here I am again, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't know that this question's for Chief Operating Officer, but if she wants to answer it. You know, we had some feedback about how we might change some of the snow removal, working with these new structures, and I'm just curious to hear a little bit about that, how that, how we've sort of planned that into our, into our snow removal process, and how the city staff will work around the medians and make sure that we, you know, minimize any problems.
It's YDOT, so that's a, that's a public highway.
Yeah, but I suspect, Mr. Mayor, that we'll, we'll have some idea.
Mr. Webb?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Counselor Weaver. With the medians there, the, the snow's still going to be pushed to the outside of the roadways. There's, with a lot of areas in town, Grand, Third Street, Fourth Street, where the buildings and the sidewalks are right on the street, it's terribly hard and frustrating when you're plowing to keep the snow off of the sidewalks. When the guys are out plowing, they do the best they can to slow down when they're along the curb and gutter there, to keep that away. I've been told by some of the plow operators, they're doing five miles an hour in some of those areas, and they're still splashing when it's slushy. So really, not a lot's going to change. They're going to pull the snow away from the median, push it toward the outside as best they can, and continue to be cautious when they're next to those narrow areas.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? From the public, is there any questions or comments regarding this item? And if you'd give us your name, and then also, there's a place for you to sign there. Welcome. Go ahead and sign that after you talk to us. Anyway, go ahead.
Thanks, Honorable Mayor and Council. I sent an email to most of you, so I think the bulk of my comments got in, but.
But picture.
What's that?
Didn't you have a picture with it?
I did send a picture of what it looks like now with traffic about eight to 10 feet away. And if they're still going to push snow to the outside, then that means it will go directly onto the sidewalk where people, where people walk. And so I think there's something to be said there about working with YDOT to address those issues, to understand how to mitigate it. And maybe we try a few things, and some things do work and some things don't work, but from a safety perspective of having snow and ice, as it is now, and it's not just the plows, general traffic throws ice and snow and rocks onto our sidewalk in the front of our building. And as a cyclist, I know just riding in the cycle lane, when there is one, you get, you get stuff thrown on you, just by vehicles. So moving it that much closer means it's going to be a constant battle for the businesses that are around those medians to try and keep that snow and ice off of their sidewalks, which is a safety issue. And, you know, it's a lot that the city, you know, put in that we have to keep those clear. And right now, there's very little space for that to go with that median, and there will be nowhere for that to go, so I'm not quite sure how they're going to fit that in. But I'd like to see something in there where the city, and potentially Main Street, and YDOT, and some of those business owners would work together to put together some kind of plans to try and mitigate that. Of course, on the other side of that south one, you have a school, which means the playground is going to have snow and rocks and ice thrown into it, and I can imagine the first parent that has a kid that gets clobbered in the head with a piece of ice. So from a safety perspective, the bike lanes will disappear. Someone asked, I, I don't ride my bike on Third when I don't have to, but sometimes it's the, the most direct line between two places, and it's hazardous as well, and I think maybe there's some education that will help. I think motorists don't realize that bikes aren't supposed to be on the sidewalk, and so they get mad when we're in the lane, but that's a rightful place for us to be. And so just understanding that we have some hazards that we need to deal with, and get some input, and figure out creative ways to solve those problems without having any more negative impact would be well worth anyone's time spent. So, thank you. Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience, public, that would like to speak? Okay, Counsel, any comments from the council? Counselor Schuster?
I didn't support the mediums. I still don't support the mediums. Your average lane width out there right now is between 13 and 14 feet. To be able to put these mediums in, our lane widths are going to go down to 11 feet where the mediums are. I don't want to be that close to some of the trucks that still go down Third Street, so I will not support this, nor do I like it coming forth to there. I think they'd make a great snow fence, too, like the ones on Grand Avenue did.
Yes, Ms. Brown.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to make you understand that this is not addressing the medians. The medians are already in YDOT design. It's really helping a business to get the design that they want, and that's what we're voting on. We're not voting on the median, so just wanted to make sure, because I think the business owner really would like to have the change.
All right, thank you.
Can I be heard?
Yes. If you'd give us your name, and then, when you're finished, sign the.
I will. Thanks, Mayor and City Council. So I am that business. I'm the president and CEO of Laramie Plains Credit Union, so we sit right on the corner of Third and Clark. Obviously, as a business that relies on the general public accessing our business, it was important for us to have that median shifted out of the intersection. As it goes through the intersection, anybody traveling in a, in a southbound direction couldn't turn left to access our business, which is the only point of access off of Third Street to our business. We were required by YDOT in the redesign of, you might remember, a very dilapidated Hardee's building at that location. And so we were required by YDOT to shut off our Third Street access. We only have an exit only through our drive-through lanes onto Third Street. So if that medium were to go through that intersection, it would restrict anyone traveling in a southbound direction from accessing our business off of Third Street without going around the, the city block. And if any of you had tried to turn right on Fourth Street, on Lewis, you can't see because there's no sightlines, because that's a residential neighborhood, and those vehicles are part clear to the intersection. So we had severe concerns regarding access to our business based on that, and as one that relies on the general public for coming in and choosing us, if they're traveling down Third Street, they can't turn in to see us, they're going to go down the street to the next available financial institution for their choice, which would be First State Bank or Bank of the West as they travel down Third Street. So, you know, I support the, the change that's being proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, now, Counselor O'Doherty.
Question. Are the medians, they were for, for calming traffic, is that correct? Is that the purpose?
Mayor, I'd be happy to take that, and these guys come back. Mayor and Councilmember O'Doherty, that is part of it. The City of Laramie Comprehensive Plan, adopted in 2008, called for medians in our main thoroughfares. That was supported by the community. Of course, that's a bottom-up document with a vision for the community. It was adopted by the council. So the medians provide some element of traffic calming and beautification as well. And, and, and I think we discussed in the work session that we had a few weeks ago, the vision was to sort of bookend the downtown with a north and south median to create that sense of place, and that you've arrived in a, you know, historic commercial core, and gives, give a sense of identity, if you will, to the, to the downtown. I think we have Main Street reps who are probably a lot more eloquent about that than I am, but yes. Traffic calming is part of the purpose, but there are many purposes.
Is that everything? Okay. Any other questions, comments, or questions? All right, we're going to vote on this, but before we do, again, I'll just remind you that the medians have been already voted on. This is to give better access to businesses, and that's why this is before the council again, so a yes vote will be to make the changes, a no vote will be to leave it as it was originally introduced. Is that correct? Okay. All right, Counselor McKinney.
I like, where it says a Third Street median is Clark Street, the change is the green between corner to corner. Out of slant instead of the. This one? I'm trying to figure out which one. Did we move it down half a block, or are we going with the one that's? We have two different designs here, so that's why.
The answer's coming to the podium.
It's taking the one out of the intersection and just doing it between Clark and Lewis, just having a, a smaller, a smaller median between Clark and Lewis. It doesn't go out.
Then that's the piece we're voting on, is the way the change is.
Right, yeah.
So it's going from, and I'd have to show you the picture, but it's going from the long one, half a block down.
Right, to the shorter one.
To the shorter one, from corner to corner.
Right, so they have access.
So they have access on.
Yes, that's all we're doing.
Northbound and southbound traffic.
Yes.
That's all we're voting on.
Yep, that's it.
Not the one ways, nothing else?
No, that's all we're voting on.
I just want to make sure that.
Good question.
Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
That item passes, so now we move to item number 16. Counselor O'Doherty.
She's sleeping.
I was reading. I move that council approve original ordinance 1998, amending Laramie Municipal Code 5.09, alcoholic beverages to align with municipal code with state statute, making clarifications and cleanup code on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Weaver. Yes, City Clerk.
Mayor and Council, the ordinance before you is to incorporate some of the changes that have been made to state statute in the most recent session. The major changes that are being put into state statute is that microbreweries can now pull 12 malt beverages to serve their own product at events and stuff. So 12 malt beverage permits in a calendar year. So that was not something that they could previously do, so we needed to add that to our code. So that was referenced to House Bill 76. We also had House Bill 219, which is the 24-hour permit that we just spoke of as well, just putting into our malt beverages that they are allowed to pull those malt beverage permits. In House Bill 212, this allows the same flexibility between microbreweries and wineries. Previously, wineries were not allowed to hold an additional license. Now they can, so similar to, say, Coal Creek Tap, they can hold a restaurant license with their microbrewery. Now the wineries can hold a retail license as well. So that's the change that came from that. And then in the following item, there's another change from Senate File 138, but we can talk about that when that comes up. I tried to make the language clear, but also reference back to state statute. It has been reviewed within the city by the city manager and city attorney, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Okay, so this is second reading. The clarifications were from our first discussion, so now is there any further questions for our city clerk regarding this issue? Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience would like to make comments or questions regarding this item? Counsel, any comments? Roll call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, this item passed on the second reading, so on the third reading, it'll be on the consent agenda, which obviously can be moved back to the regular agenda, but right now, it seems to be moving along, so we'll put it on the consent agenda on, on the 4th of June. Our next item is item number 17, and that is Counselor Pierce.
Okay, I move that council approve Resolution 2019-45, setting the liquor license master fee schedule with an effective date of July 1, 2019, as indicated in Attachment A, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you. Nope, you're good.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster, City Clerk.
Sorry, I was looking at my notes, and I missed that. That last part was in there. Mayor and Council, thank you. This resolution- Mayor and council, thank you. This resolution is in response to Senate File one thirty-eight. It now decreases the maximum fee that municipalities are allowed to charge for catering and malt beverage permits. It previously allowed us to charge up to one hundred dollars. It now allows us to charge a maximum of fifty dollars. We were previously set at seventy-five dollars. So the total net losses in the range of about seven thousand dollars annually for us, based off from last year's totals. And I did, if you notice, I did also remove the golf license. We have no such thing. Talking to the liquor division, nothing like that even exists. The golf clubs are included under the club licenses, so that's why that's stricken out of there.
We tried, but-
Yeah.
All right. Any questions regarding this item? All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the audience? Comments from city council? We are moving right along. Roll call.
Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. That concludes our regular agenda items, and so at this time, we go to public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak on any items that we have not covered on the agenda? And we'll even let you talk about things that were on the agenda if you'd like. Just talk to us. Okay, so at this time, then, we would like to have the council bring forth any consideration of future council work session topics. Anybody?
Looks full still, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it's still full. We're chipping away at it, but it's still full. Okay, let's move to the next item. Counselor Pierce?
Okay, I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations, Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, lowercase a, Roman numeral seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn to executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned to executive session.